We'll now call this special workshop meeting of the actual city council to order. Council, you have a copy of the agenda for the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting, and I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? With none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Woodruff at this time to carry on with the budget review.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. Over the last several months, we have been working, and we're down to the final few items that we need to get clarification on. As you are aware, the individual department budgets have been reviewed, a lot of the department issues have been reviewed with you and settled. And tonight here are the five items that are really left for us to discuss. How we're going to fund recycling, the water and sewer rate increase, paving for the coming year, cost of living increases for city employees, and then what do you want to do relative to adding additional police officers under the COPS grant? A very quick review, as you know, the city has a recycling program where city employees pick up recycling once a week. However, we do not actually do the recycling. That is under contract with the same company that the county has, the company is called Sunoco, not to be confused with the Sunoco Gas Company. Sunoco is a regional and very well thought of recycling company. For years from FY11, which is basically 2010, up to 2020 or 2021, the city was fortunate that we were able to do the collecting, leave the recycling material at the material recycling center which Sunoco ran or runs, and the cost to the city was zero, other than the cost of our own employees and equipment. The charge to the customers of the city was zero. What we know is over the last three to four years, recycling nationwide and worldwide has changed. Recycling is no longer a lucrative business. And therefore, as the contract with Sunoco has run out, and we're negotiating a new contract, what they are saying is the days of no cost are over. So the proposal which they are giving the city is a five-year proposal, and for FY22, which is of course the next fiscal year, they will charge us $95 per ton. The charge to the customer needs to be determined, how do we cover that cost? What we do know is that recycling, as you face this tonight, there are two issues that we need for you to address. One is the policy on the value of the product. Now, we're going to discuss that in just a minute. The second is how do you want to fund the additional $158,000 cost for FY22, and the $250,000 cost for FY23, and then beyond and beyond? Let's talk about the policy first. We recycle about 2,500 tons of material a year. The material has a value. The value, like any commodity, changes based upon the commodity's market. This is what the value was, for example, cardboard, and this is now about four or five months old, but for a ton of cardboard, you could get $16.05. But that's not a stable price. It's just like gasoline across the street. We've seen it come up, we've seen it go down, we've seen it come back up. The things that we collect six months ago would have produced a value of $22.62 an average ton. When it comes to the recycling cost, one of the things that the budget needs for you to decide is what value are you going to place on the recycled products to offset the cost? We look at it from, and here are just examples, option one would be to assume that the product has no value at all, because you can't be guaranteed a price. So what you would budget is the full $158,000. Option two would just pick a price, $20 a ton. If you did that, you would be budgeting at $75 a ton, and you would then have that offset by the $20 a ton. Option three is pick some other number. Any number you pick is nothing but a guess. So in the examples that we've given you, all of those are nothing but guess. As you will recall, in the gasoline business, years ago, you established a policy that we have followed now, I believe, for six or seven budgets. And that is, we're going to budget gasoline at the most expensive price we've seen. And that way, you're always physically sound. That way, you never have to come halfway through the year and say, you know, folks, we budgeted gas at $2 a gallon, and we're having to pay $3 a gallon, so we need to go into the fund reserve, and we need more money. For that reason, Gail Maids and I have talked about what we're comfortable and what we recommend regarding your policy on the value of the product. We believe that the best physically sound thing to do is to assume that you get nothing for the product, that you fully fund, assuming that the product has no value, you fully fund it, and why? Well, as you can see, it's physically conservative, no guarantee on the value, and guess what? At the end of the year, if you do get $20 a ton, then you're returning money to the general fund balance rather than having to possibly raid or take money out of the fund balance. So one of the questions we're going to ask you to do tonight is give us a policy decision from a budgeting standpoint on what value, if any, do you want to put on the product? Because that has a direct relationship into what we put in the budget. Clear on what we're asking there? We'll come back and ask you to make a decision in just a couple of minutes.
What about the impact on the cost?
Well, the impact on the cost, Mr. Bittner, if you will look back at this, you will notice that at zero, the cost for the coming year is $158,000. If you notice option two, if you assume $20 a ton, then the impact is $125,000.
I mean the charge to the residents.
It would come down, only nominally though, because remember, unless you're going to assume that the value almost completely offsets the cost.
Okay.
But there is, I see the point you're making.
Okay.
My apology for not recognizing that. Now, the contract actually says that we have $5 escalators. So what you'll notice is each year it goes up 95, 100, and so forth. And you'll also notice on the far right-hand side what the actual cost, assuming no value, is calculated. You can see the cost is going to go, and I recognize that I hit the wrong button on the very last one, I apologize for that, but you can see at least by July 1 of '24 through June 30th of '25, you're up to $275,000. That, you know, this becomes an operation that consumes a lot of money. We've been very fortunate for the last 10 years. The options that we reviewed with you in the past was to increase the general fund subsidy, increase the monthly sanitation fee, or increase property tax. Well, y'all said very quickly, property tax is out. So as I present the others, I'll remind you, we're actually dealing with option one or option two. Current residential fees are $16 a month, six of that goes to the county for disposal, 10 goes to the city. Small business, you can see, commercial fees, that's your current fee. Option one is increase the subsidy. So if you do not charge any more on your sanitation fee, then for the coming year, you will go from a 1.8 million subsidy, meaning that the general tax dollar is subsidizing the sanitation budget, you're going to go up to 1.96 in round numbers. In FY23, you're going to go up another $100,000, and each year after that, you're going to go up a little and a little and a little, because if you look back at this chart right here, you can see it goes up roughly $12,000 a year after you get into the full year. Why the first year is less is because it's not for a full 12 months, because the contract with Sunoco doesn't end until October 31st. So the new contract begins November 1st. So your general fund subsidy is option one. Option two is to increase the fee. For every dollar in residential, you generally create $140,000. And you can see small business, and you can also see commercial, $4 will generate, you know, over $500,000. Now, the increase by $4 would mean that the new residential fee would go from $16 to $20. Small businesses would go up $4. It would cover all of your recycling and maintenance costs for the full life of the program, of the contract. So, Mr. Bittner, if you went with $4, what you would be looking at is enough money so that in five years, you would not have to raise the rate at all. At the beginning, you would be collecting a little bit more than what you would need. In the end, it would be covering all of the cost. And it also includes the additional costs that we will have relative to maintenance and so forth of the equipment. It reduces the general fund balance, it covers all projected costs through FY27. Commercial fee increases, it's an enterprise account, it has no subsidy, the increased fee would go from $7.70 to $8.70, it accounts for service cost increases and so forth, as you can read. What we would recommend to you is that you charge the escrow fee. The general fund balance is there, it's certainly a healthy general fund balance. But I would remind you that we're going to be taking roughly $3.5 to $4 million of that out to pay for Jack M yet. It'll be paid back from the 4 cent fund over years. I would also remind you that you're looking at a fund balance to balance this budget this year, not including what you do with employee wages, that's going to be somewhere around $4 million. So we believe that from a fiscal standpoint, the best option, maybe not the best political option, fiscal option is to raise the fee on small business and on residential. On commercial, we would recommend it be phased in. And the reason why is because you are currently at an enterprise fund, we know that many of your enterprise customers are restaurants that barely made it through, I know residents had a difficult time too. But we recommend that be phased in with 30 cent additional tip in FY22, a 70 cent additional tip in FY23. We would also recommend you budget at the full charge per ton, assume no value for the product, it's the most physically sound. And then, of course, the subsidy would be whatever it needs to be. And then the annual review of the value-added policy. You may find after the first year that we were able to return so much money to the general fund that in FY23, a year away, that you're comfortable setting a floor, a number, $10, $15, $20, $25. That's our thinking on residential, I'm sorry, on recycling and sanitation. Can you give us your questions and thoughts, and how do you want to address this?
One thought, as far as the sanitation or the recycling is concerned, it's not like you, you know, you can eliminate those that don't want to recycle versus those that do. So it really has to apply to everybody. The other thing is, there is more than just the environmental aspect of recycling that we have to keep in mind, and that is the cost, the associated financial implications that it has. For instance, how much are we going to have to pay in the future for a new landfill, if one can be permitted? Or how much are we going to have to pay for transfer fees later on down the road when we can no longer take anything to the landfill? Those are things that, you know, we need to weigh out here, because I assume that as long as we do the recycling program, we can, you know, extend the life of the landfill, there's no doubt about that. But the thing about it is, by not doing it, we're going to cost ourselves a lot more money down the road. I feel confident of that.
Well, you know, Mayor, the point, recycling, if we're going to have a recycling program, the customers are not allowed to say, well, I'm not going to recycle. It's either you have a recycling program and everybody participates, or you don't have a recycling program. The other thing to remember, there are certain things in the state law that we're required to recycle. And then the other thing to remember, it isn't going from $95 down to zero. If you had no recycling program, which you actually are required to have one, but if you could eliminate recycling completely, you're still going to have to pay the $57 a ton going to the landfill. So, you know, it's one of those things where there really aren't any good decisions, I guess the best way to say it, is we're trying to pick the least worst option.
I just feel like the least worst option is to go forward with the recycling policy and try to, you know, fund that before, you know, later on where we have to spend more money, you know, to get rid of our, all of our sanitation. So, I mean, that's just something to keep in mind.
What are your thoughts about the policy as far as the value of the product? Do you agree or disagree with setting it at zero?
I think it's a hard call. I mean, we don't know. We have no idea. I mean, it's kind of hard to figure out what that market's going to bring as far as recyclable materials. Like you say, you know, places that were frequent users of it, such as China and places like that, they're just not buying it now. Why, I don't know, but...
I think it's smarter just to leave it at zero. I mean, I think that's the most business savvy choice to make, because you don't know what it's going to be. I mean, if it ends up we can get money before in the back end, then that's great, but if we budget that and then end up coming out short, then that's going to be a bigger loss in the long run. I mean, I think it's a good idea that we're going to probably have to charge to cover those costs, but I was wondering maybe if we just split it up instead of doing four all at once and hitting the, you know, the citizens all at one time at $4, we just do $2 this year, $2 next year, and kind of go into it as an easy transition instead of all at one. Kind of people, like you said, are coming out of COVID, and that is an issue, and, you know, people's paychecks and all that has been affected, so instead of hitting it all at one time at $4, you know, this year, do it $2, this year, $2, next year, still gets that $4 mark, maybe just at a slower pace then, all at one time.
Well, let's go back to the first policy question. How do you feel about the zero value as we put the budget together? You comfortable with that, or you want to put a value in it?
I'm for it.
I think we have to assume that's what it's going to be.
You just don't, it's a crapshoot.
Okay, so what I think I'm hearing from the council, Mr. Thomas, you look like you're concerned.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I appreciate the conservative approach to taking it, but I would want to, you know, assuming we do it at zero, that we do take an opportunity to reflect as soon as we get some accurate data of what's going to go forward. Also, as far as the increases go, of course, we're going to have to increase, we've got to increase cost, but I'm reluctant to take the opportunity to add to our fund balance. I mean, I think we should charge just enough. If we're charging for a service, you know, because we're, because we're going to experience an increase on our cost, it seems like we're almost taking an advantage. Okay, well, our costs are going up, so we're going to go ahead and raise the cost even more to the consumer, when, I understand, you know, physically conservative that we would benefit, the city, the government, but if it's a charge for service, then you should charge what it costs. Don't take the opportunity to charge more than it actually costs, because you can offset some other deficit on the background. Also, it's, you know, I always think about the little old ladies, I mean, it's a regressive fee, the people that use the least pay the most. I mean, a household of four, we'd get more benefit than the single, you know, widow living alone, that kind of thing. But obviously, you know, charging $4 when it's going to cost us a dollar more, does it, you know, in the coming year, what you've showed us, is not really...
Well, remember, I understand where you're coming from. Remember that not reflected in these costs are the costs that are in your budget for replacing the equipment that recycling, that recycling is made by.
Right.
I mean, every time we replace a recycling truck, that's quarter of a million dollars. And we have one of those in the capital improvement, not the capital improvement, in the equipment replacement. Now, I certainly agree with you that we need to be, we need to be respectful of the person who's paying it. But I'd also remind everybody that for sanitation as a whole, the $16 or $10 that we are charging, it doesn't even cover 20% of the cost of recycling. I mean, their cycling budget is being subsidized in the current year by $1.8 million from the general tax dollar.
Not just recycling, the total sanitation, the total sanitation, not just recycling.
The total sanitation budget.
Right.
And I think you have to look at this, you don't have to, I would encourage you to look at it.
I understand, we have looked at it over the years, and we've incrementally raised that, that monthly fee. And I guess being the water sewer representative, I would get more feedback on it, because it's going to show up on their water bill as well, so...
Yes, sir. Well, I think the big thing, though, is the fact that we don't know, we don't know what, we don't know what we're going to get as far as that value in that value-added product there.
And it's, I guess it's not really pertinent, but do you understand why they put a step increase in their fingers for five years?
Well, the reason why they put a step increase is because the initial contract that we got back would have taken us from zero to $125.
Oh, okay.
A ton. So we negotiated a phased-in approach that would get us up to a reasonable number. I mean, you know, in any negotiation, they give you what they would love to have, and then you wind up with what they're willing to have. So that's why we actually have it $5 increments, but believe me, we could have started off instead of $95 a ton at a much higher price per ton.
Don't you think it would be easier, though, to go with what staff says with the $4? It'd be easier to go up now and then come back later, once we find out, you know, what we're dealing with?
I don't agree with that, because as Councilman Sosa said, not only would a business affect it, and we don't even know how the general public has been affected, yet, really. We haven't got to that point, so I would like it to be more incremental, like you're doing with the businesses.
What do you recommend?
I would have liked to see the models with one, two, three, but...
Well, we would really, you know, with all courtesy, we'll meet as many times as we need to on this. We need some decisions from y'all.
And then you also, there are other fees possibly that's going to increase as well that we're going through, so...
Yeah. We're looking at two fee increases tonight, one for sanitation and one for water and sewer.
Right, so I would like to see what the, what both of them would be, because we need to weigh that when it comes to...
You'll see that in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So on the policy question...
No, you go ahead, sir.
No, sir, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
On the policy question, what do you want to do?
Do you want a separate motion to set the policy, or is consensus okay with you?
Whatever.
I'll make a motion that we use zero for our value-added product for budgeting purposes.
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we're at that point.
Make another motion. I make a motion that we increase the recycling fee by $2 for this fiscal year. And of course, as the manager stated, we'll have an annual review. I know it won't be a full fiscal year, but it will be some, you know, one of the things you've got to think about is that the tonnage is probably going to start, will be increasing as we continue to grow, so that's going to be an issue for us too. So, but on the other hand, hopefully, we'll have some more households paying as we increase the number of residents. So I can live with a $2 fee right now to be looked at next year or whatever, and I think we'd cover our costs that we're expecting in next year or so.
So you're putting that...
So I make a motion that we go to $2 for this fiscal year.
Would that include the commercial recommendations also?
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a motion in a second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I still would rather find out how much we're going to, we're considering adding to the fees, and then possibly come back to this at the end of the evening.
There's a motion in a second on the floor, it's got to be voted on.
I'd like to, I'd like to further discussion to address your issue. I think that roughly, on the water and sewer, is going to be a little over a dollar a month, based on what we've looked at before. A 2% or 2 and 1/4 is a dollar something. So you're less, you're less, you're $3 and $3 to $4 a month.
I'll show you that.
I'm going to, for part of the discussion, I'm going to vote no against the motion, because I think it's more prudent in terms of the city's finances, rather than splitting $2, so two years, one increase this year, another increase, go for the $4, and be more fiscally prudent. So that's where my no vote would come from, that I'd rather have the $4 fee.
I tend to agree with Randy on his comment, Mr. Thomas's comments, that it is more fiscally prudent for the city, but I'm not sure it's fiscally prudent for our citizens, and I'd rather, I'd rather be gentle on what we're charging. I don't want to gouge our citizens just because we can, although maybe it's not a gouge, that's probably a wrong term, but perhaps hitting us, hitting a little heavier than what we really need to at this point.
It's more of a weight.
Right, we may need, we may need, we may need to get to $4, but we don't really know at this point.
Find out, right.
And that's what, I think what Mr. Thomas is saying, let's, let's do what we know we've got to cover, and then adjust and see.
Okay. All right, there's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Go ahead, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Mr. Jackson, did you vote aye? I didn't hear what you...
Yes.
Would say aye? Aye, okay, five ayes.
On the water and sewer rate, we focused on, you know, several years ago, you established 2.25%. So this chart shows you the 2% and the 2.25%, and what the impact is on the base rate. Current base rate for water and sewer, as you can see, is $53.52. You can see the difference in the 25 or .25% is 13 cents on your base rate. Now, we all recognize, probably a third of our customers pay the base rate, most of us pay a lot more than the base rate, so that will continue through. So for example, if your, if your water and sewer bill, forget any other part of the bill, is $100, you're going to see it go to $102.25, or you're going to see it go to $102. I know in our case, our, at our house, and I have to admit, I love to take showers, so at ours, our typical bill for water, sewer, stormwater, and garbage collection is $103 a month. So based upon what you've just done, it will now go to $105 a month with the $2 that you've added. If you add this, it will also go up, as I said, by either two additional dollars or $2.25. When you look at the options, we would recommend that you continue this at 200, at 2.25%. And let me explain to you why. We're getting ready to start the very large project that I commonly refer to as the Northwest Passage. I think technically it's called Parkwood. That project continues to be a primary project that's going to allow us to have growth. But what we also know is that in the last several months, construction has gotten expensive. Now fortunately, this is a pipe project, but I will tell you the bad news. We are now recommending to you, you postpone the redevelopment of Newbridge Street for the following reason. It's a small project. It's only, you know, putting in the medians and the sidewalks and all of that, it's going to be about a $3.5 million project. Well, that's a small project when it comes to capital projects that people bid on. We already know from the first bid that came in that that project's going to cost more than... We already know from the first bid that came in that that project's going to cost more than what we have budgeted. So we're recommending on Newbridge Street that that be postponed. Not canceled, but postponed indefinitely. You have the drainage portion in. Relative to the Parkwood project or Northwest Passage, because that's going to be a thirty-five to forty million dollar project, we believe it's still going to have good competitive bids. And the materials that we're going to be using there are primarily concrete and pipe and rock. While construction has gone up substantially in single family homes and buildings, those are not the products that primarily are causing that to go up, it's wood type products. So we still are hopeful that that project's going to come in thirty-five to forty million. We also know that by previous discussions, y'all have said that the nine million dollars we're going to get from the American Recovery Plan, that you want to apply that to that project. On the basis that by applying it to that project, what you're doing is benefiting every rate payer for twenty years. Because otherwise, you're having to borrow that nine million dollars. Because we don't know what the bids really are going to be, we're saying again, from a fiscal standpoint, the best thing to do is keep the rates at two point two five for another year. Certainly, two percent is less than two point two five. But what you don't want to do is get yourself in a position where suddenly you say, boy, I wish we had. We don't think you're going to have to raise the rates beyond two point two five year after year after year. You've seen that model. But until you get the budget, until you get the bids in for that project, you really don't know what your rates need to be. So I would say to you, our recommendation is now's not the time to be changing that rate, even though you're only dropping at point two five. Because you don't know what the bids on that big project are going to be. Now, that's our thinking.
Quick question on that, Dr. Ward. With that, with that small change there, how would that impact in the out years, I'm talking about in twenty-eight and beyond?
Well, if you remember in the model that Gail and Sabrina put together, what it showed you was that ten year period. Gail, can you come up, my memory is not perfect, on the out years. I believe it had, you know, any less money that you take in is going to have a negative impact on the out years. Do you remember?
I don't remember the exact amount, but I think when we put the two percent in, there was a larger increase in two thousand and twenty-eight, and I think that's why the, the slide says beyond twenty-eight. Because with the two point two five, it could potentially come down at that point. And I don't, I apologize, I don't remember what the numbers were.
About a, a two percent would have given us a base rate of about a hundred dollars and sixty-eight cents, if I'm, if my notes are correct. And there wasn't much difference from the two point two five.
Well, what happens in the ten years is you, you use up your fund balance in the water sewer fund, and that's where your rate increase needs to be. Thirteen percent to bring your fund balance back up.
The two point two five had six yellow cautions, remember how those yellows, I know you do. The two percent had seven, so there was one more caution, there was no red, but there was a caution, one more, one more extra caution in there, so. And, and really, the, the difference between two point two five and two percent is really very, very minor.
Okay, well Kevin did, or the media people did some magic and found this slide. Can you also show the slide of two point two five? So two, four, six, Mr. Warden, you're correct, six yellows on this one, go back please. Two, four, six, seven.
And again, the thing you don't see here is the chart that has the fund balance, and of course, that comes down as you're spending it. And that's where your large increases come, when that runs out.
Let me show you the, there you go. Whoops, okay. What Mr. Jackson was asking about earlier, not recognizing that you were going to have a, a motion a while ago on sanitation. What I have shown here is Plan A and Plan B, four dollars and two dollars. And then water and sewer at two point two five and two point zero, Plan A, Plan B. So you can see Plan B at two dollars a month. And then Plan A for water and sewer is an additional one twenty a month or one oh seven a month to the base rate. So in a simplistic form, your options would be, and of course, the first one is now off the table, but sanitation B plus water and sewer would be three dollars and seven cents. Or, go down to the bottom, sanitation B and water and sewer A is three dollars and twenty cents. So the difference again is thirteen cents. We would encourage you to rec, to adopt based upon your former motion, the bottom one, and that's sanitation B at two dollars this year, and then water and sewer at two point two five percent. So it's three dollars and twenty cent increase.
Motion second, discussion.
What's the motion?
The raise, the two point two five.
Of course, on that.
Okay.
Any discussion? Here, none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Paving. There's no good news when it comes to paving. I guess there is good news, Wally is not with us tonight, he has a family obligation. But we did get the paving bids in. Ron, have you seen any of the paving bids that came in this week?
No, I have not.
Okay, but we should be informing you very shortly as to whether they came in within the budget or whether they are below or above, hopefully they're going to be below. It's interesting, while gasoline prices fluctuated all over the board the last couple of weeks, we didn't see that pipeline issue impacting the price of paving. So it really wasn't about the price of a barrel of petroleum, it was really about the availability of gasoline. So what we would recommend to you is that you determine in October, when you see your budget, when you see your audit, rather, how much money you transfer to the general fund. On the other hand, you can transfer money from the general fund today, it just is, what is it that you feel comfortable doing? I will say to you right now that if you want to transfer money from the general fund balance, please be conservative on your transfer. But I will also say to you, we have a lot of roads out there that need attention. So we don't give you any recommendation other than what we think is the most physically sound one, and that's wait till you see what audit, because I remind you, this past October, when you saw the audit, audit, you felt comfortable taking a million dollars instead of sending three point five million to your fund balance, balance, you transferred only two point five million. So I leave that open for, give us, please, some direction.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I was the one that was, that, that talked up, uh, setting aside some money during this fiscal year for paving, so if you don't mind, I'll go ahead. I still recommend that we intend to do a better job of taking care of our streets rather than hoping that we have some money come into, to the general fund, unassigned general fund balance. And I recommended just a one, one, one cent of property tax equivalent, three hundred and fifty thousand. And I recommend that we, we increase our paving by three hundred and fifty thousand for this next fiscal year, with a caveat, using the same, same sort of idea, that if, um, if we had a, if our fund balance doesn't look good, then obviously we wouldn't have to ask for any additional funding. If however, we put some, some money into the unassigned fund balance, we just subtract the three hundred and fifty thousand that we already paid for. So if, if for example, there's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that goes into the unassigned general fund balance after the audit, then I would say, hey, we, we covered our paving and, and there's no need for any additional funds, we don't have any to, to do. But on the other hand, if we come up with another three and a half million, which, which we don't really know, then we might want to say, well, let's do some additional funding for, for paving. And I would fully say, okay, and then you could subtract the three hundred and fifty that we've already allocated. If you were willing to do a million last year, you would, and we did this, we saw we had enough money to do that again next year, we could say, all right, we only need to put in six hundred and fifty thousand because we've already put in three hundred and fifty thousand. I know that's a little convoluted in my thinking, but I really think that we need to intend to take better care of our roads rather than hope that we have some, some money to take care of our roads. So I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we budget three hundred and fifty thousand in this next year budget for additional paving.
With, with that caveat attached, I take it that, as you, as you explained.
And that's, that's not binding in any way, you know, you know, it's up for discussion, whatever happens next year, we're not, whatever I might add as a caveat is not binding on the, on the, on the council.
Well, I, I would like to make sure that's part of the motion.
But I won't, I won't forget what I just said.
So, so we're going to dedicate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in property tax or out of the general fund. And like you say, if we have money, if we have that same ability at the, after the audit in October to do another million, we would actually only be doing six hundred and fifty thousand, is that correct?
And you, and you said that better than I did, thank you.
Okay. You were a little complicated, I'm just kidding. That sounds good to me, so we, we have a motion and a second, was there a second?
There was a second.
Anybody other discussion? All right, here, none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay.
Cost of living increases for city employees. COLA stands obviously for cost of living adjustment. And it's based upon the CPI, which is the consumer price index. In the southern region or south region in twenty, for the year twenty twenty, it was one percent. For the south region as of March, it had already gone up to two point six nine. And by some information which Jeff Hudson's provided, which we provided to you, you can see that inflation is regardless of, I mean, everybody has an opinion, and this is not a political statement. The numbers are there. You can say that there's not inflation, you can say there is, it really doesn't matter. What we can tell you is the cost of living in Jacksonville and everywhere else is going up. In two thousand and twenty-one, we gave a cost of living adjustment. If you'll recall, we did not pass one at the time the budget was adopted because we weren't sure what was going to happen with sales tax. What we can tell you is that sales tax wound up almost in the black for the last fiscal year, amazingly enough, even with whatever that was, four months of COVID. So in October of last year of twenty twenty, you did approve a one point four five percent cost of living adjustment for your employees. It was retroactive to the first paycheck in July. The county proposal is three percent with a two percent adjustment. I'll come back and discuss the two percent adjustment. Onwasa is proposing, and the two members who are on here, I don't know whether y'all have voted on your budget or not, but what we were told was they proposed one percent, but they also gave a three percent that went into effect January the first of this year. And for the city, it's to be determined. Let's clarify, the two percent adjustment is not going to all county employees. If you will recall, we have in the base budget three hundred thousand dollars for wage adjustments. So what they are putting in their budget is adjustments, it's not for all employees, it's for the lower paid employees. And we're going to come back in a minute and talk about your wage adjustment fund. So I, I believe it's appropriate for you to look at the county at three percent. And did Onwasa pass your one percent?
Yes.
Okay, so in the course of however you want to calculate that, they're either getting one percent more for next year or three percent carried over, I'm not quite sure how you, how you look at that.
Did, did I, do I remember a statement that, that Jeff said they were not, they were going to hold off on that one percent?
On the what?
Were, were they going to hold off on the one percent until, till a little later in the fiscal year?
It's not my understanding.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood.
Let me show you some, some information. As you know, we have five hundred and sixty-three or so employees, and they're spread out over a variety of funding sources. The general fund, including solid waste, water and sewer fund, stormwater fund, internal services fund. For every one percent, you can see the cost. So one percent raise, a two percent raise, a two and a half percent raise, and a three percent raise. Now, let's go back and look at them one more time, that way you can see you have options and you can come up with other options. One percent cost the general fund one, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Two percent is obviously twice that. Two point five percent, and then three percent. As the manager, I have never, in the eleven years I've been privileged to stand in front of you, I have never recommended a raise. Why? Because whatever I recommend, if you agree with me, I'm the one that gets the credit, not you. And if you disagree with me, then if you give more, you become the hero, if you give less, you become the heel, if you pardon the expression. So I'm not going to break that. These are your employees, they're not my employees, they are your employees. And so really, you know, these are tough decisions as to what you want to do as far as wage adjustment. Let me mention a couple of things that we're facing. In the lower paid employees, we currently have forty vacancies. We've never had that before, we do not, and I, and it's all over town, you face it as a businessman. This past weekend and my traditional weekend trip to my favorite home improvement stores, because I have two, one that's blue and white and one that's orange and white, and I won't mention the name Lowe's or Home Depot because that'd probably be inappropriate. But I counted twenty signs now hiring, twenty signs. We're in, we're in, in tough competition to find workers. Now, I'm not talking about upper paid workers, there's always competition for that. But in the lower paid categories, we're simply not competitive. So one of the things that we need to do is look at your cost of living increase for your current employees to try to keep them. We've had a couple of employees, and just call it like it is, we had three parks employees who let us know they were being offered jobs by the county, and they're considering taking it because the county pays three dollars an hour more. You know, we're in competition, and if we're going to have quality service, competition costs. So one of the things that, that I am recommending to you tonight is that in addition to whatever cost of living you give, that we add to our, our wage adjustment pool some additional money. What we have right now is three hundred thousand dollars. What I'm recommending is that you add another hundred thousand to the general fund wage, that you add a hundred and twenty-five thousand to water and sewer, and that you add fifty thousand to stormwater. And remember, stormwater, that includes about half the street department that actually works on the stormwater portion, not coming out of Powellville. But the reality is we're short of workers, especially in the lower categories. With all that bad news, Gail did give me some good news today. She feels very comfortable now that she has looked at the sales tax a little closer, adding to the budgeted amount of sales tax, and since it was her good news, here's Gail.
Well, when I looked at the sales tax, when we first started budget, of course, I was looking at months from last year that were low due to COVID and, and. And, and as some of you know who look at the monthly reports, there's been a very strong increase in the sales tax. And I think we decided 200, $250,000, we might increase the budget for next year, looking at the last few months and the strength of the sales tax.
Associated with that, um, at what point did the state start collecting, uh, sales tax on online purchases?
It's happened about two years ago.
Feeling the impact of that and that's why we see the surge despite the fact that we had COVID?
We had a tax auditor here probably about a year ago and I tried to talk to him about that and he, he was not forthcoming with that was the, the increase because there are a lot of places in the state that are seeing these strong sales tax. The, the state did a couple of things, they started charging sales tax on services that they never did before, like when you take your lawnmower to get it worked on, the service you pay a sales tax on where you used to not to. And then, um, the online sales is a.
Utility was.
Some of your major online retailers just started, uh, living in the sales tax on your purchases too.
The other thing mayor to remember, if you're in the construction business, real numbers. Uh, in the last six months, a 2x4x8 pressure treated has gone from $5 and 20 something cents to $9.98. So every time you buy one, the sales tax on it didn't stay the same, it almost doubled. A sheet of roofing plywood, half inch, 4x8 plywood, has gone from $19 a sheet to $41 a sheet. Now how long those things are going to last? I hope for the housing industry that they don't last very long. But what we're seeing is, uh, what we think is some very strong sales tax growth.
When you say strong, how much are you talking about?
That's why we're comfortable increasing at a quarter of a million dollars. Uh, you know, the, I would not, I, I think you could go a little higher, but not much higher. But the problem that we're, that we're obviously concerned about is this. What does happen when the lamination companies that are causing plywood to go way up because of certain shortages, they get their problems fixed out and plywood's no longer $41 a sheet, it's back down to $20 a sheet. You know? One of the things that y'all have said, and I apologize, I don't like to refer to y'all as y'all. One of the things that the mayor and council have consistently said in the 11 years I've been privileged to be your manager is this, be physically sound. You know, so everything that we give you is based upon what we believe are the most conservative estimates so that we never have to come back and say, oops. Oops is a bad word when it comes to accounting and budgeting. So we do feel comfortable, Gail, with 250,000, are you comfortable with that? Pardon me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So that's the good news. So with that, we go back to your options. I'll go all the way back and walk through again and 1%, 2%, 2 and 1/2, and 3.
We have fallen behind in past years. Last year was 1.45%, right? And I think every municipality around here was ahead of us and that shows to some effect on our effect of, uh, losing employees. I think with the news on a sales tax and where we are compared to our neighbors, the county and Onwasa, our principal rivals for employment, I'd suggest we go for 4% cost
I'll second that. And I think that is a good idea. I know it's more money, but you know, being in the business world, retaining employees is, is a huge thing right now. I mean, you can pay them more, but y'all still have to treat them right and get them to keep coming back to work and have quality service, you gotta just, you gotta pay. And I mean, sometimes that comes out of, you know, the city's budget or your employer's budget or whatnot, but at the end of the day, if you don't have those people that want to do the job well, you're not going to get the good service in the long run and you're going to have to pay for it. And, um, it's just what it is. Um, so I do agree with the 4%. I mean, I know it's more money, but I think that what needs to be done.
We don't have a reference point up here for.
I'm sure they can figure that out.
Mr. Carter, being the mathematician in the family also, he said all you do is go to 2% and double it. So, thank you, Mr. Carter.
That's lawyer smart.
Is it binding?
We don't, we don't want to lose employees from the city to the county or other areas because we're not willing to pay them. And that's what's going to happen and that's what has happened, just by what you said earlier with, you know, that so much vacancy and, I mean, it's just, it's a competitive industry and a job market period. And if you're not willing to pay, you're going to get behind.
We don't want to drop in service.
And we're not, and that's what's going to happen. We're going to start losing people, we're going to have, you know, less service. I know we want to save money in there, I just don't know if this is, they're going to do it. So I, I do agree with Mr. Bittner on that.
Well, the governor's office must be getting concerned about the amount of jobs that are not being filled now because they've come out now saying that, you know, if you're going to get that extended unemployment benefit, you're going to have to at least look or apply for three different jobs in a week, I believe? Is that correct? Who knows how that's going to, you know, work out?
Well, I mean, we get tons of applicants in, in my business and people just won't show up. They get the paperwork, they file, they, most likely, I'm assuming they'll get their unemployment check and never hear from them again. We'll offer them jobs, they'll say, oh, I'll be there for day one, never see them. And it just happens over and over. So, I mean, I hope, you know, that stands true that, you know, they start requiring that.
I have a motion and a second out here now and, uh, open it up for further discussion.
I'm uncomfortable, I can say that. I mean, I know we have to be competitive, but you know, we've got a lot of, we have a lot of good dedicated employees and, uh, it's, it's, there's a lot of factors in, are out there now creating this, uh, employment paradox. You know, there's been so much stimulus and different things that have happened to people that have discouraged work. And we, we just had, I mean, we cannot, we cannot sustain that, obviously, and I don't know that you can out, outbid everybody in town. Obviously, we face tough competition, we can't even stand up to the base, obviously. The county's been getting more generous, I mean, they, I don't know how many days off they get now because every other year when they didn't give a raise, they give additional holidays, which we thankfully haven't followed suit on. But I was, uh, I won't support this motion.
Further discussion?
Dr. Woodruff, um, for this upcoming fiscal year, what percentage, again, can you remind council that the, um, insurance is going to go up for our employees?
3% increase, but now that, you can't assume that that 3% is equal to the wage 3%.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And currently, what percentage would you say of our employees are not, um, signing up for their insurance because of the amount of money that is costing them or they can't afford it?
I don't know that I have that number. What I would, what I would say is, uh, in the lower paying jobs, there's no question that over the last three years, because we went, and I may be in the incorrect order, I believe we had a 25% increase, a 15% and a 3%. Is that the way the order was? But even if it was 15, 25 and 3, uh, we have lost a number of people who make less than $50,000 who have had to back out of our insurance program simply because the premiums have just gotten too high. But I can't give you an actual number, sorry.
Okay, further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that and mainly because I don't, I don't think that it really addresses the, the issue at the lower end. Certainly 4% is, is a, is a nice increase for everybody and including those on the lower end, but, um, I think of, I think we need to address and, and, and offer, excuse me, some, um, some cost of living. But I think, don't forget, we're, that's not going to address the lower end. And I think what, what Dr. Woodruff is suggesting is that we put additional money in the, the wage adjustment, um, separate from the cost of living to address that wage disparities on the lower end. In many cases, I, I suspect that the wage adjustments might be, might be considerably more than a 4% in order to bring it, bring some of those lower, lower salaries, lower wage earners into, into better competition. So, um, I'm, I would, I would be willing to go with 2% and, and, and also to fund the manager's requests for additional monies for the, for the wage adjustment. But I'm just not comfortable at a flat 4% and, and then throw, throw the extra money on top of that. I just don't know how, how good I feel about it from a fiscal standpoint, standpoint, so.
Let me ask you this about the 4%, that Mr. Bittner has, has made a motion on. Now, this would not include those other adjustments, correct? Because I mean, aren't we still looking at a whole issue with compression by doing that?
Well, you're certainly looking at, at compression, but the, whatever money that you, uh, let me go back and address that a little differently. Uh, the comment that, uh, Mr. Warden made is I think very much on point, whether it's 2%, 3% or 4%. The real, the real value that's going to come to the lower paid employee is going to be in the pool of employees where the wage adjustment money is. Now, it's certainly true, whatever cost of living you give, it's going to apply to everybody. So let's just say for discussion purposes that you give, and I'll use the bottom number that was mentioned in the top money, whether it's a 2% or a 4%, in addition to that, there will be wage adjustments that will go to the lower paid employees that will bring them up to the level that we have targeted. We actually have 141 employees who make less than $14 an hour. Now, uh, so whatever, I would love as the manager to stand here and say, hey, I would be thrilled with 4% plus all the extra money that I asked for, for the wage adjustment. But I would tell you, the wage adjustment money is where we're going to really address those people in the positions that we are losing or not being able to fill. So it's, it's the wage adjustment money. Uh, I know tomorrow morning I may have city employees say, I can't believe you talked against a 4% increase. I'm not talking against a 4% increase, I'm talking the reality of where do we get ourselves in line with competing? It's not with the 4%, it's with the wage adjustment. There are going to be some city employees, and I've already looked at all the data, there are going to be some city employees, even if you give zero cost of living increase, they're going to get a 7 or 8% increase. Because that what, that's what it's taking to move them up the scale enough where we can begin to be competitive. Now, I will also say, whatever you give in cost of living is going to help us move that employee even a little further. Because the 7 or 8% that I talked about, that's not going to make us competitive, it's going to make us less non-competitive. So, uh, you know, I kind of muddled through that, but, uh, you know.
What you had proposed for that, that figure, I mean, you broke it down and kind of lost me with the, you said it was 300,000 last year is what we.
The base budget has in it $300,000. We're recommending that you increase that by $100,000 for the general fund, so that's 400,000. That we also add for water and sewer, 125,000. And for solid, uh, for stormwater, 50,000.
So 575.
Well, if you include the 300,000. So, yes, sir. So what you're doing is putting in a wage adjustment pool of over a half million dollars.
We have a motion and a second at this time, so.
One more thing, mayor.
Yes.
Discussion, um, do we have any models of how we compare to other comparable positions within the area? Have we ever done that?
I'm sure we have, yes.
Yes, sir. Every year, the, uh, the human resources department looks at our wage scales versus our competition. What we do know is the North Carolina League of Municipalities provides that, but they show it over the whole state. And what we have been very politely told by you as the elected officials is what they pay in Asheville or Charlotte is what they pay in Asheville or Charlotte. So what you've asked us to constantly do is look at this region. And this region you have defined as from Wilmington to New Bern and right here. Because it's not likely, especially in the lower paying jobs, that somebody is going to move from here to go to Charlotte. Maybe they would. It's also not likely that we're going to attract in some of our lower paying jobs, somebody coming from Charlotte to come here. On the other hand, the good news is Mike did have a young lady walk in last week as a police officer from New York City. And she is now on our force. And I can tell you, without looking at any numbers, I'm sure she took a cut in pay. But I think one of the reasons why she took a cut in pay is because of the quality of the community we have and the fact that our crime rate is as low as it is. So, uh, Mr. Jackson, we can provide you with a lot of information, but what y'all have consistently said is what you're interested in is right here.
Well, that's what I'm interested in, I just, I was thinking in other jobs and within the, with our general area, you know, that's, that's my interest, that's what I asked.
What we could do, uh, if you're comfortable, we could do this, you could approve whatever you want on cost of living. And then you could approve the increases in the wage adjustments that I've asked. And then we can bring you back, so that way we can get the budget adopted. Then we can bring you back more information that you can see on competitive salaries. And if at the, at that time you decide that you are saying, okay, we think we put in too much money on the wage adjustment and we want you to hold a little of it, that's fine. But just, uh.
The question's been called in, uh, it's been, it's been a motion and a second, Mr. Bittner, Mayor Pro Tem's calling a question on it. So all those in favor of Mr. Bittner's, uh, motion? Aye. Say aye. You got, raise your hand if you're for it, okay. That's three nays. And I get to break the tie and I'm going to do it in favor of increasing the, or with the motion. And you're going to bring us back some more information on these adjustments, right?
Yes, let me clarify, the motion was relative to the 4%. The motion, I don't believe, contained anything regarding the additional on the wage increases? I mean, on the, on the adjustments?
No, it did not. Did not.
If someone wants to make a motion on the wage adjustment, certainly could, that's up to you.
I'll, I'll make that motion that we go ahead with the manager's recommended wage adjustments, polling, funding.
And we will bring you back more information to show you the competitive salaries that Mr. Jackson asked for.
So there's a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion on this issue. Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Need of hands. I, I need to know who's, I need to know who the ayes are.
Okay.
Okay, it's four to two. Nays or four to two?
All right.
I believe Mr. Thomas is the one that voted nay on that, is that correct? So it's five.
Oh, it's five, one, okay.
Just for the record.
All right, this time, let's take a, a break, we're going to take a few minutes and come back. I know you have another issue coming up, correct?
There's just one issue left.
Could we, I wouldn't mind slogging through.
All right, slog on.
The, the matter of the grant for the police. As you'll know, as you'll remember, I apologize, as you remember, the initial request was for six officers, options were six, three and two. You've seen the cost, remind you, it is a 75, 25. Remind you, it is a 75-25 on personnel and salary only. 100% of the equipment falls to the city. So if you approve six officers for three years, you're looking at the grant covering $260,000 and the city covering $347,000, as you can see through these years. Four, three officers rather is half that, and then two officers is a third of that.
I thought I made a motion at the last meeting that the chief be authorized to file an application for two additional police officers. I have to say, I don't know whether that was seconded or not.
Was that the motion?
Our records did not indicate that council authorized that.
I think you had made a motion for three at one, one point, didn't you?
Okay.
Or am I mistaken? It never, it never goes.
All right. Forget about it.
All right. Now, I will, in all fairness, I'm going to go back. As the manager, I don't recommend that for fiscal reasons. It will come out of the general fund balance. It's a recurring expense without recurring revenue, and we have many other challenges, many of which you've addressed tonight. But also in fairness, I will remind you of the other comment I made. If you honestly think, I don't like the word honestly. When somebody says, "Let me tell you honestly, I'm going to give you my honest opinion." Don't give me any opinion unless it's an honest opinion. You're not qualified. If you believe as an elected official that you're going to need more officers in the next three years, then from a fiscal standpoint, the grant's a good thing. Why? Because the government's going to pay, federal government's going to pay 75% of it as far as wages. If you turn it down, then I think you're saying that for at least the next three years, we're not adding anybody to the police department. And I will also say this. If you add anybody tonight through this grant and that grant's approved, then I'm going to ask you to also say that at least for the next three years, you don't want to hear any more requests for any more police officers for the next three years. We have a, there is no question, you look at the statistics, Ashley and Mike can show you need 30 more officers. You look at the statistics, you can also see we're one of the safest communities. And I'm going to take a moment to give you an example of how Mike and the police department are taking care of you as the elected officials. Yesterday, in the afternoon, a gentleman decided he would walk down the center of the road on Country Club with two pistols in his hand, walking straight towards oncoming traffic with two pistols in his hand. Police department was called. What did the police department do? At the end of the day, everybody went home alive. Why? Because you have endorsed that the sanctity of life in this community is real. You have endorsed that we are going to do crisis intervention training and we're going to do de-escalation. And Mike's personnel kept that guy alive. And after they finally disarmed him without a shot being fired, he told them to their face, "I came today for suicide by cop." I'm just saying. We owe that man and everyone in blue a thank you. Otherwise, we would be sitting here, just like some of our sister communities, facing real issues. So again, I have a great respect for the police department. I do not believe that you can buy your way out of situations like this. You have to train your way out of situations like this. Again, it's up to you what you add. If you're going to add though, I would, I would ask you to say, folks, this is all we're giving you for the next three years. I didn't mean to get off in such a speech, Mayor.
I do not believe the council has the authority to bind future councils. You could not get on that road. I'm sorry.
But let me...
As always, the attorney's correct.
Let me, let me ask you a question. I know we've discussed the possibility that we are expanding in the Northwest Corridor over the next so many years. I think you said that over by the River of Life Church, there's going to be an additional 700 houses, housing units built. And, you know, that, that's going to require more resources at some point, if we can find people to hire, of course, and train. I would, I would certainly, I mean, there's nobody up here that doesn't think our police department is not crack, you know, is a crack police department comparable. I say comparable to no other. I mean, we are, we stand alone as being one of the best. We got some, we got, we're very fortunate to have some of the best officers that I've ever had the opportunity to meet. And I worked in that business for 32 years, and I'm seeing, I'm seeing things that, you know, really just amazed me that how, how much policing has improved since I took the oath in 1974. It's a different world. It's, it's a different way of policing, a better way. And it's getting better, and it's going to get better. But nobody disagrees that they, they are not the best. And I would, I would ask the council personally, I think that doing two, adding two officers on the grant, plus filling all those positions that we still have open, you know, trying to make a, a good effort at recruiting, trying to recruit officers and maybe fill those, those spots. But I'd say two on the grant for right now.
I'm going to make that a motion that we authorize the application for a grant for two additional police officers with no commitments beyond this year.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Thank you.
If it's acceptable to you, we will not have a workshop next Tuesday, but we will be prepared to give you the final budget for you to consider adopting on June the 8th.
Can you, can you get those impact figures though, as far as the adjustments, just for, for us to understand?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your courtesy.
And also, I think, I think Mr. Jackson wanted to look at figures as far as comparison.
Right, kind of comparable. Give you at least the numbers on the bids for paving. They range from $1,090,000 to $1,321,000. What I'm not sure is what our estimate was when we went out for the bids. I know the CIP number was $750,000, but I don't know if we included more streets in, in that particular bid document.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Before the, before we adjourn, there's one other matter. Dr. Washington asked me yesterday, and we did some research, there is money available through the various COVID released, relief funds to help people with funeral expenses. That is a FEMA application. The city, Northern County, is the applicant, or the application agency. We have placed on our website the link so that anyone who has had a loved one pass away due to COVID, and it must be connected to COVID, then they can file for financial assistance. There is no allocation per county. It is apparently a nationwide allocation, and anyone, again, who has had a loved one pass away due to COVID is able to file a grant application, and we have set that website, set that link on our website.
Very good.
Thank you very much for your courtesy.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, you got anything? Council should be made aware that there is a pending statewide bill in reference to redistricting. In the Senate, the terms and so forth are not clear yet. We will be advising you as soon as anything happens on that. But I did want you to know that that has, that has been a bill introduced. Thank you. All right. With that said, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.